Row Kyle.
Mayor Connie Ball.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bill Costner.
Here.
Alderman John Bug.
Here.
Alderman Freddie Gregg.
Here.
Alderwoman Kathy Holt.
Here.
Alderman Kenny Morgan.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
Thank you Jessica. The next item of business approval, the minutes of the previous meeting, a regular session, January the fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll say it.
Okay, got a motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. On behalf of myself and the Newport City Council, and I'm sure everyone gathered here this evening, we'd like to extend our sympathy Terry, to you and your family and the passion of your father, Harold Hurst, and let you know anything we can do to be of service or help to you, you just let us know.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next, like for the Hood family to come forward. Come on around here with me. I'm Hood. I would like to say that over the years, I've been a part of the city and all the councils of making presentations of awards and plaques and various things, but never has one meant so much to me that we could do for this family and this loved one that was definitely an icon in our community, the most loving person that I have ever met. And I would like to be able to tell her today that my English Bulldog Spike, whom she took care of dearly, is twelve years old, still kicking strong, and I'm sure it was due to the nurture and the care that she gave to him. And if there's anybody missed any more than this lady and this community, I don't know who it would be.
Amen.
And before I present this, I want to read the information on the bottom of this plaque. For her tireless dedication to animals and the Newport Animal Shelter, Dr. Hood was instrumental in initiating the shelter's rolling rescue and spay neuter programs. She donated her time and resources for the improvement of the shelter. Everything she did was a reflection of her great love for the animals. May God bless her and this family.
We really appreciate this so much. She out of the world with this body and I want to help continue the things that she wanted for the Newport Animal Shelter. Thank y'all for coming, Lisa. And I know that we have a lot of things to be proud of in Cock County. I know our animal shelter is the envy of all the counties around us. There's a lot of great things here and this is just another one of them. Thank you.
Before you all leave, Dr. Hood, we have one other thing.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules right here and add the animal shelter to the...
To the general.
To the general please.
Okay, we have a motion to suspend, second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none.
I'd like to make a motion that we take the Newport Animal Shelter and rename it to Carol Hood Memorial Animal Shelter of Newport.
You want to say Doctor?
Doctor.
That'd work, but we can add that right there.
Yes.
I'll second it.
Got the second to that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. Let it be done.
There are some basins nice to see here.
Yes. This is the best that I can recall. Dr. Hood, you just take your time. We're in no hurry. This is a great moment. You're welcome. God bless you. Let's have a moment silence please. Thank you. Have some awards of recognition that we'd like to give out. Accident Free in Two Thousand and Thirteen, Newport Street Sanitation. Ben, I don't know if that'll break if you've got it in a dump truck or not.
He's done keel this year.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just don't drive it, Ben.
No wheels.
I'll take it home.
Good job Ben.
Thank you.
Good luck tomorrow. Newport City Administration.
Yes sir, good job.
Yes, good.
Jack. We do everything fast. Newport Parks and Recreation.
I think it's what, seventh consecutive year only, Mike?
Eight.
Eight.
I didn't look at that. I had my glasses on.
Now that's a good record.
Just come down.
Nelson.
Nelson.
Get the wild eagle.
Yeah, really. Just on the head.
Say, that's wrong.
Like I can tell.
Yep, he's going in.
Okay, let's move right along. A report from interim city administrator James Fincham.
Thank you Mayor. First item I have is, on April first, Danny Lindsay's term on NUB will be up, so you all will need to address filling that position at the March meeting. So what I would like for you all to do is to set a timeline on receiving resumes, has been our policy in the past, and also if it's your pleasure to set a workshop to interview the applicants.
We need to, I guess we need to set that tonight, James.
Yes, if you don't mind, because like I say, you'll need to vote on it in March at the next meeting, so you need to give them, you know, two or three weeks to get their resumes in and then, of course, it's y'all's pleasure on whether you want to... Generally, you have a workshop where you let them come in and speak and interview them. And so...
You need a certain number of days. Does it add, go on the paper? Is it ten days or seven?
It's, I don't know that there's a, we've got anything said. I think it's just been...
There's no...
Rules. In the past, we've always ran it in the paper once or twice and then given at least, I would think, two weeks after it's run in the paper, but there's no legal requirement about that.
March, well, the snakes might be so many, that's what workshop, what?
A week before? Is March the fourth okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay. March the fourth. At five o'clock?
Then you can do the deadline, just throwing dates around, March first or the third. The third would be Monday.
Yeah, I would do it. No, I'd give it a couple of days behind. I wouldn't give you right up to the meeting. Yeah.
What's that Friday? Friday the fourth.
Before, the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
Maybe twenty-eighth, maybe last...
Okay, deadline the twenty-eighth.
That's the last day.
It is.
Five P.M., we'll put that publication in the paper Friday or Thursday maybe.
Nelson?
Yeah, Thursday or probably Thursday or we'll put that out tomorrow. Well, not for tomorrow, for Grand Park, because of the weather, but probably weekend, Saturday basically.
So that would give two weeks.
Okay.
That would give two weeks.
Is that okay there everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The next thing, this came in after the agendas went out and the books went out. We applied for a grant, we actually applied for two grants, Ben did, on oil recycling. One was to use it to heat with out there in the shop. We didn't get that grant, but we did get the grant to do recycling of oil. And so it's fifty-three hundred dollars. And what I'd like is permission to let that out to bids for those, for that equipment that's authorized to purchase for the oil recycling. And that's just, all we've got to do, we have to advertise for bids on it.
We need a motion.
Well, I don't, I mean...
I'll make the motion. I'll say it.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no.
Thank you, and of course, we have to bring the bids back for y'all to approve. The annual rule development conference will be April twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth in Murfreesboro. Any of you that's interested in attending outlet, Virginia know. Today, I met for about two hours with the E-911 board. We're in the process, we've begun the process to renegotiate our operating contract with them. It was first done in July of two thousand and four, so it's almost ten years old. And so we're gonna begin work on renegotiating that. And if there's anything that's outside what y'all approved in two thousand and four, we'll bring it back to y'all, be ratified, but if it stays within the same parameters, it won't be necessary to do that. Weather preparations, we, you know, we're hoping tomorrow, I don't know, I think y'all play, you're like us, we try to monitor that regularly. We hope we're prepared for the worst, but I don't know, our salt is really low. We've been trying to buy salt for a month. And everybody's, there's just not, nobody will say any, because there's so much demand for it, everybody's running short and we are too. And so Ben and I met for about an hour today going over contingencies on what we can do and hopefully, of course, one thing we hope, that it stays farther east and doesn't work its way this far back west, but we're as prepared as we can be with what we've got. David Hill, yesterday turned in a two-week notice, the Assistant Street Superintendent. His last day will be February the twenty-fifth, so just to make y'all aware of that. And also, unless you all have any other suggestions or ideas, City Hall will be open half a day, Saturday, February the twenty-second, to collect property taxes to give folks just an extra time. We've done that in the last few years and we've had quite, we've had over a hundred thousand dollars come in on that day. So it's my intent to do that again this year, if that's okay with y'all and y'all feel that's okay. That's all we've got. Thank you.
Mayor, just an update on the annexation lawsuit. I was in court Tuesday where the chancellor was setting the docket. We're on the calendar for July the ninth for a hearing on the annexation, so just to let you know. Still ongoing situation.
Has the...
Sir?
Has the utility part of that been done?
That's in discussion right now.
Next item is item six, the beer board. Dennis Thornton, term is up, and I did call him and he is interested in being reappointed to serve on that board, so what's your pleasure?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
No, second.
Got a motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. And I don't think Roland, is Roland here? Okay, he said he probably would not be here to give a report on the Tanner preservation.
Dennis is here.
You're back.
Give a speech?
Victory speech. Okay, under new business, item A is consideration of resolution two thousand and fourteen dice zero three, acquisition and renovation of Suncrest Apartments, which is what we discussed at the... What's your pleasure?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Okay. Bill, seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. Hear none. Item B is consideration of memorandum of agreement between City of Newport and the Newport Utilities for the CDBG.
Basically what that is Mayor is, of course, we recently got the five hundred thousand dollar grant to do the renovations down at the sewage treatment plant. And all that says is that that property when purchased will be NUB's, because the grant was applied for through us and it's just a memorandum of understanding that states that once that's in place, it's a part of their properties that not, you know, we don't have, you know, the system about how they own it and we own, you know, but anyway, it would be their property. It's not that we don't buy it and it's ours directly, it's ours through our contracts and charters and stuff with them, but basically that's what the memorandum of understanding is.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say it.
Motion, second. Discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. The consent agenda has two roadblock items. Do we have a motion to approve those?
I'll make the motion.
We have a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Comments from citizens, five-minute limit. Johnny, you're the timekeeper at the bell?
Got you, got you, got you.
Comments from citizens?
I have a question.
Yes.
Ethera, who is next door?
Let me, excuse me, go to that mic. I've been told before that I need to send because of the recording process, sorry.
Okay. We're next door, as everyone knows, Ethera, and we just hired four new van drivers. We're out of parking down there and I was asked to ask tonight if it would be, if you would have any problem with us parking on this side of the building and the grass. And we want some rocks too.
Back there, is this what you're talking about?
Well, next to the Phil Orns lot.
Yeah.
Does the city have one all the way down to the hill?
They mow it.
Don't they?
Yes, we purchased that property with an RTP grant, it is a trailhead, and I don't know if that would be under the terms of use of that property. There's also discussion for it to be used as a farmer's market, so we put some calls in to make sure what the property can be used for. So it is a trailhead and it's a part of the greenway system. So we're trying to get some answers from the state to make sure that we don't violate any of their rules on that piece of property.
And once you get this information, then we could...
I should know by now.
Okay.
It was purchased with the RTP money, yes.
Well, we're probably gonna start parking down the street, so there's no, there's no parking down there. None. And the vans, you know, they have to be on the lot a lot of the time, and so they take up the whole row, on that back row on the other side, and then the van drivers drive in with their cars, so their cars parked there. And so when we have people that have to come and report, there's no parking. So you'll probably see cars on the parking lot, on the sidewalks and parking down the street.
Well, I'm sure that if he...
Who wants the bill?
Mr. Bible, I don't know what his first name is.
Just because we own the property, it shouldn't be allowed to be done that way. I mean, they should be able to park on the street up there. An RTP site, so we'll just have to find out what the rules are.
Maybe he leaves tomorrow.
I'm just a messenger.
Okay.
Hopefully, we can work with him.
If he finds out, it's legit to do that. Okay, yes.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
First, I want to say that we're having a Valentine's Day special at our restaurant, two steaks for one. For those that... Two for one. It's almost... For those of you who do not know me, my name is Geraldine Ridens and my maiden name was Geraldine Hall, and I was born and raised in Cock County, Cock County High School. I moved away in seventy-nine, I moved back when I was married, and my husband and I opened up Maple Ridge Mobile Home Sales in ninety-one, and later we acquired the property where our restaurant is today, Brandywine Creek Steakhouse and Tavern. And it's a historical site, so we do get a lot of interest in the property. As well as interstate, it's on the west end of town, right across from Rusty Wallace Ford. But the reason I wanted to speak to you tonight is my concerns with our community dying, loss of jobs, loss of income, and the young people are having to leave town to get jobs. And we, I think that we all know that industry and factory workers and jobs like that are not coming back to this or any other small towns for a while. So I think we need to capitalize more on tourism and figure out how to get the people to come here, just like six million people visit Smoky Mountains Park a year, part of those could come here, if we, if we could have something else for them to come for. And my question about that was, on the news a couple of months ago, I heard that Lake City, Tennessee is applied to the state to change their name to Rocky Top, Tennessee, which offends me because I think this is Rocky Top, Tennessee, and I think we have the mountain. I have a map that proves that we have Rocky Mountain Road and Rocky Mountain right between Edwina and Del Rio. Now, I know that you're all looking at me like, well, we're not gonna do that, but that's fine. If you don't change the name of Newport to Rocky Top, Tennessee, they're gonna get the name. And they're gonna be the biggest boom of any small town in East Tennessee for probably five to ten years to come. And everybody in the world has heard of Rocky Top, Tennessee, so why wouldn't they want to go there and just spend the night to say that they spent the night in Rocky Top, let alone all the other businesses that will come and open their business in your town just to be in Rocky Top? If we were to do that, even the City of Newport can have the official gift shop right off the interstate and sell anything and everything that had the word Rocky Top on it and make enough money to fund a lot of taxes and pay a lot of employee jobs. So there's a whole lot more to them just getting the name Rocky Top than you think if you really do some research on it. It really will truly be the biggest and the most famous town in Tennessee, and I think we ought to be that. I don't think anybody's ready to change the name right now, but we need to block Lake City from getting the name for future use here. So I can see it now, big sign, Newport, Tennessee, Home of Rocky Top, or something to that effect, until you decide if you ever want to change the name to Rocky Top. And after about five to six years of, or two to three of using our slogan as Home of Rocky Top, you'll all just see how much money and people that it would bring into this county. I personally know this because for six years, on my menu, for six years, it says Home of Rocky Top. And on my shirt, for six years, it says Home of Rocky Top. And so many people from all over the United States come off the interstate and stop at our restaurant. When they see this, they want to know, well, can we go to Rocky Top? Can we go see this? So why couldn't we fix Rocky Top with a view, a scenic drive, picnic tables, trashcans, or something that people could go up there and say, you know, a scenic outlook that I've been to Rocky Top? So my question is, can we do, can we do this? It would not be a hard process to do. It would not require a lot of work, but it would take our attorney filing something to block Lake City from getting it or arguing with them, and it's already made it through the House, and they're expecting for it to be approved March first. I've talked to Jeremy about it, I've talked to Steve Sutherland and anybody else that would listen to me, I've talked to him. I've mentioned it to Kenny, I didn't know your number, I'd have called you. But I just think this is something that we can't sit on and not try to block them from getting this name for our future use, because factory workers are not coming back for a long time. Tourism is the way that most cities have decided to survive, so we have to have a destination, and Rocky Top would make us a destination to come to. And they have to have a reason to get off the interstate. Then once they get off the interstate, which I'm bringing myself, a lot of people off the interstate with our billboards, and just the area brings a lot of people and the hotels bring a lot of people, but they want to do something. I send them to Newport Dry Goods. I don't know where to send them. I don't know what there is to do that they would enjoy. I send so many people down to our, I call it our antique little general store, I send them to Newport Dry Goods. I tried sending them to the clock factory, but they couldn't get their hours straight, nobody's ever there, so I quit mentioning it at all. I just sent them to Newport Dry Goods. And we try to feed them and present a good image for Cock County when they come off the interstate. I have a clean staff, a clean restaurant, and I want to know if we can't do something to keep our people at home, there would be so many jobs in this county that nobody would have to leave to look for a job. They could open their own business and make a lot of money doing it, and the city could get in on it too, and the county could as well. I think that's all I have to say.
Any comments?
Very hopeful we do.
She wants to present that to the CLB.
I'm not changing, I'm not changing, talking about changing the name of the city.
And get them involved.
I like the lines of the slogan aspect of it more than changing the name.
I think you go to CLB and they get involved in it, because that's in the county.
Well, Vaughn sent me to Connie.
What you saying, Connor? What can we do about blocking them from taking the name?
It would be the city that would need to block that, because it would be Newport, Home of Rocky Top.
Did you hear of Jeremy Faison speaks? It's already, man, ain't no way we can do that. We'd be a busload of Lenore City people up there on us like we ain't there.
It's Lake City. It's Lake City.
Well, see there? I didn't know.
Well, and just for public information, everybody's information, Lake City voted to change their name back in November, because it's, Lake City is part of their charter name, just as Newport, Tennessee is part of our charter name. To change your charter, you have to pass a resolution. The resolution has to go through the state legislature. The resolution has to go through the state legislature, has to be approved by the legislature, signed by the governor, has to come back to the city council and be approved again, just like we have modified our charter in the past or amended it. Lake City is in the process of doing that. They voted to do it. They had some controversy, and for whatever reason, their council voted to do it. And as has been stated, it's in the legislature, it's passed the House, and more than likely going to pass the Senate, and the governor's going to sign it. I doubt, other than a public outcry, there's nothing I could do to stop it. No, I don't think there would be any legal means of stopping it. If you wanted to write or contact our state representatives and ask them to try to stop it, that would be my advice. As far as using the name Rocky Top, the owners of that trademark are the heirs of the two people from Gatlinburg who wrote the song. Quite familiar with the situation. They wrote the song in the late '60s, '67 or '68, somewhere, the song Rocky Top. They wrote it in about 30 seconds, is what I understand, and made millions of dollars off the song. But it refers to a place in the Smokies. And it's my information, it was in Sevierville County, for whatever reason. I don't think that's material. I think what is material is they own the trademark to that Rocky Top. They sell the trademark. The University of Tennessee has purchased the right to use Rocky Top along with the parrotie, or in a combination with the parrotie with the University of Tennessee. Were we to make money using the name Rocky Top, we more than likely would get a letter from their lawyer, which Lake City's already got one, saying that if we make profits, they'll be entitled to royalties off of that trademark use. Not to say that it wouldn't be worthwhile. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that's the way the process works. So, but those folks own the right to use the name of Rocky Top. So there it is. But to change their name to Rocky Top would require us changing the charter, voting to do that, having one of our legislators take that to the state, which I suspect would be impossible to do this year at this late date. It's already mid February.
But I agree with what Kenny was suggesting. What he was saying is, well, to Newport, Tennessee, home of Rocky Top, not necessarily change the whole city's name to Rocky Top.
Rocky Top is in Cock County. It's between Edwina and Del Rio, and I have a heritage map of Cock County, and it's on the little Moonshiners White Lightning Trail.
That's not the Rocky Top referred to in the song. I agree. I've been up there. It's a beautiful place.
It says Rocky Top Road and Rocky Top Mountain.
That's not the Rocky Top referred to.
Well, they could have one in Sevierville, too, that they call Rocky Top. But couldn't you file something that you don't think it's, that they should be approved for the city name to be changed?
Don't really would know any legal basis to object to their use of that since it's, there's Rocky Tops all across East Tennessee. I don't think it's as lucid to Cock County.
Where is Lake City?
It's on 75 North, about 45 minutes north of Knoxville. And there's nothing there but a lake. I mean, it's really a small town.
It used to be another name they changed to Lake City. I listened to it on TV. But Lake City was, I forgot the name they said it was, and they had it through the state later, the name of Lake City.
That's one of the... It's a colony.
I have a little bit of insight behind that. There was, the city alderman said, our town is dying, there's no jobs here, we've got too many buildings boarded up, these property owners can't pay their taxes, which I can't pay on mine. But they decided that they're going to go out and find somebody to help them develop their town. And they did find a man that's supposed to have more money than Dolly Parton. And he's, and they all sat down and they said, well, Lake City's not an attractive name for a city. We need a draw, we need a destination. And some, one of them come up with the idea to change the name to Rocky Top. And the man said, if you'll get that name changed to Rocky Top, I'll spend millions helping you develop your county and your community. I didn't see that in black and white, but that's what I was told.
Supposedly, there's a theme park.
So it's just going to be as big as Sevierville someday. But Newport could try to stop them from getting the name and use the slogan and maybe do as much as what they're doing in the future.
We still have the 75s.
So if there's anything, Terry, that you can, or if you all agree to try, I think that if they get the name Rocky Top, Tennessee, I don't even think we'd be able to use the slogan, home of Rocky Top, unless we file something or get it approved by somebody else. Of course, you know, we may have to face some royalties. But I think the money would outweigh the cost, the income, and the businesses that would move here.
Your time, Doug.
Thank you.
Of course, it's not an agenda item to vote on. Would y'all want this to be discussed at a future meeting or workshop or something?
I would like to. Just the slogan, hard to see if we could PR to help. I don't think we can change the charter.
Only part she's talking about is not a short and a delay. We should have thought of it first.
So let's, you know, just look at it, just for discussion. Okay. James? Any other comments from citizens? We have a motion adjourned?
I'll make the motion.